Good afternoon. Welcome to the Coastside Fire Protection District Board of Directors Regular Board Meeting, August twenty seventh, two thousand and twenty five. Roll call please, Jean.
Director Cockrell?
Here.
Director Hannah?
Here.
And I would note that Director Hannah is appearing telephonically as provided for in Assembly Bill two four four nine, as he's at the Special District Association meeting. Director McKinney?
Here.
Director Cheryl? And President Burke?
Here. Thank you. Please join me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic from which we stand, one nation, united states, with equal will, where there be any judgment of our own.
Moving on to consent calendar, the note that Director McKinney has asked to be recused from the voting involved in the consent calendar discussion. Why have a motion approved the consent calendar? So moved, so moved. I'll second it. Any discussion? Roll call please, Jean.
Director Cockrell?
Yes.
Director Hannah?
Yes.
Director McKinney recused. Director Cheryl? President Burke?
Yes.
Motion passes four zero one recused.
And I just note that on the consent calendar on the back of the page, just for information that we have, we just voted to approve the annual payment of CalPERS for one eight, one point eight million dollars. That's part of the consent calendar we just approved. Moving on to continuing business. Item A, I would like to postpone item A, review and discuss approved Station forty one roof repairs to a following meeting. So we're going to skip item one. Going on to item B, resolution accepting the June thirty, two thousand and twenty four audited financial statement. The Chief Wilson?
Yes, so this is the audited financial statements that we finally got back. It is the recommendation of the board adopt and the intent resolution accepting of the public record of the audited financial statement dated June thirtieth, twenty twenty four from Archwell Company LLP. I will note that during the course of this audit, they did not identify any deficiencies in internal control that would be considered material weakness, and everything was good.
Very good. Board asked for vote on this. Would any discussions or any comments be made?
I think both.
I mean, I'll just make a couple of comments first and echo the chief's comment. This is unqualified, which is as good as it gets. Yeah. Let me just mention a historical item that this district went through at one time, not too many years ago. Our audit, our affairs were in such a horrible condition that the auditor refused to even do the audit, never mind giving a signature to it. So we've come a long ways and we're in very fine shape. It is unqualified. There are no deficiencies in the internal controls. Our revenue as indicated in the, in the audit was one point six million dollars for the year. For two thousand and twenty four, our expenses were thirteen point four million. It noted that we had no long-term debt. Capital assets were some twenty three million dollars. The CalPERS retirement information and so forth is, is included in this. And I note that we have in the prior meeting paid off a miscellaneous portion of our CalPERS debt and the, the other employment benefits for foreign employees by powers in here as well. So with those, I'm just going to mention one other thing regarding your, it's kind of a financial thing, but as you can, board members, I'm sure are all aware that there's a lot of uncertainty regarding public financing in a lot of areas. The state is, depending on which report you read, is either has a negative balance or a positive balance in using things and as well as the county and even local governments. And the only reason I mention it is that it brings up to me the, the possibility of some action being taken on our revenue search. So as such as ERAF, which just came up in the, in the past year. And also, I think we all remember the, the discussions we've had on GPA. So some of our, this is a wonderful audit. Everything is fine. I just think that we ought to be cautious as to what we might encounter in the time ahead. With that, do I have a motion to approve the audit?
Second.
Moved and second. Any further discussion? Patrick?
I'm clear on it. Thank you.
Roll call please, Jean.
Director Cockrell?
Yes.
Director Hannah?
Yes.
Director McKinney?
Yes.
Director, Director Cheryl? President Burke?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you. Moving on to item C, Community Facility District number thirty eight Princeton Warehouse, Chief Wilson.
All right. So in front of you, for item C and D, these are two new formations of a CFD. So the first one is at two oh three airport in Princeton, and it is a five thousand three hundred and twenty two square foot warehouse. So this resolution would be formalizing that facilities district.
I make a motion to approve resolution number two twenty five dash forty three.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call please, Jean.
Director Cockrell?
Yes.
Director Hannah?
Yes.
Director McKinney?
Yes.
Director Cheryl? President Burke?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Item D, Community Facility Number thirty nine Big Wave, Chief Wilson.
All right. So this is the Big Wave project, also located in Princeton. It is thirty eight dwelling units of a total of twenty four thousand seven hundred seventeen square feet of mixed-use area. And this would be the formalization of that community facility district number thirty nine.
I have a motion to accept the resolution number two twenty five dash forty. So moved.
Second.
Moved and second. Any further discussion? Roll call please, Jean.
Director Cockrell?
Yes.
Director Hannah?
Yes.
Director McKinney?
Yes.
Director Cheryl? President Burke? Motion passes five zero.
Item E, Resolution approving a second amendment to the professional service agreement for on-call public queries consulting services with S R Rose Engineering, Chief Wilson.
All right. So this is, the staff report here is to extend the services we've been receiving from Sean Rose Engineering for the duration to December thirty first, twenty twenty six. And that would be total compensation from the seventy five hundred to one thou, a hundred thousand, ninety two, three, twenty five. And I think Chief Silva or Jean can speak further, but we were reaching the end of our current agreement and we still have work to do. And we've enjoyed the service that we've been receiving, so we would like to extend that.
Very good. Chief?
I agree with Chief Wilson. Yes, definitely having Sean on board has helped a lot and helped me be able to stay focused on the fireside and then help assist him on anything being, keeping the project moving forward. Anything he has set for us.
This is related to forty four?
Yep.
Yeah.
Forty four, and he did the south block for forty one for us as well. Jean, is there anything we should be aware of?
No, I would highly recommend that you approve this. We were doing a lot of this sort of work for you, and that is not really legal work. It's work that is, is better centered with Mr. Rose, who has a, a very long background in managing public projects. So we are very supportive of this extension.
And for the board, we have the Station forty four temporary and permanent station projects under this. The South Lot project, which is nearing completion. The Station forty kitchen remodel that we budgeted for, for this fiscal year, along with the Station forty generator and electrical upgrade would be included in this.
Oh, Mr. Rose, did you, sorry.
Will the roof repairs or the water with each problem in forty one be included under Mr. Rose's super series responsibilities?
So for Station forty one, we pulled it from the agenda today because we still need to do some investigation on if it is covered under warranty with the station. So let's see where we go with that. But yes.
But if it is something we do, Mr. Rose might be, might have the opportunity to oversee that as well.
There is possibility, there is.
Thank you.
Mr. Rose, would you like to make any comments? Unless you invite me to. I'd be happy to say anything, but I'm not in particular, no. Any further questions or comments? I would make a motion that we approved the extending of Mr. Rose's contract up to a maximum of a hundred ninety two thousand, three hundred and twenty five dollars.
Seconding.
So moved. Oh, second?
Yeah.
Over to the second. Any further discussion? Roll call please, Jean.
Director Cockrell?
Yes.
Director Hannah?
Yes.
Director McKinney?
Yes.
Director Cheryl? President Burke?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you. Item F, review and discuss Coastside Fire Protection District actuarial study of retiree healthcare liabilities on the GASV seventy four, seventy five, forward valuation for the year ending June two thousand and twenty five. Chief Wilson.
All right. So this is the GASV seventy four, seventy five, which is a required actuarial study. Looks at the liabilities associated with retiree healthcare program as of June thirtieth, twenty twenty five, which was the end of this coming fiscal year. It provides the information needed for accounting and our obligations. It included twenty five retirees. I know we've previously talked about how many retirees are on there. This kind of forecasts their future that runs out to twenty thirty two. And those numbers start to drop off, forecasted on, I think, national averages. I didn't see anything of significance. It didn't identify miscellaneous employees. However, we closed that account for the first. So that was noted, but that goes to a zero in the report. So it won't be included in future reports. And this is just a review and discussion stuff.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief. Any other comments or questions on this? I just make really kind of an add-on comment to the chief's. The, the healthcare for former employees, the PAS, as we know it, we've discussed many times. And I think we know it's in very fine financial shape for the twenty five employees that are covered under this and will continue on in the future until unfortunately, there's no retirees left. But it's in great shape and it's doing very well. It is a side comment. I, at the conference in, in Monterrey, there's that I would chatter with the PAS people and they have reflected, had mentioned, brought up to me with a fine shape the, the district is in terms of our contract with PAS, which I think we've had for at least ten years, probably a little bit longer than that, and we're all as well. The, the other, just as, is an information item, if you or information, if you look at page ten in your packet, there's a excuse me, this is page ten of the CalPERS section, not the there's a, just a I'll find it in a second. Basically, if you can find it, there's two sections here. There's one section of, on the of the back section is CalPERS. The second first section is PAS. But if you go to page ten on the CalPERS section, just as a point of information, it talks about the discount rate and what the impact it can have on what the district owes towards retirement for our former employees. This has nothing to do with Cal Fire. This is former employees. You, you have to look in the packet to get to the to the direct page, but, but under the CalPERS, the only point, not to belabor this, but CalPERS has the ability to change the discount rate, and they've done it in the past to do it. A slight change has a major impact financially on this district. The current rate, if you will, our obligation under this program is some thirteen million dollars. If, if they decrease that one percent, we jump from thirteen millions liability to nineteen million. So, which we, by the way, have no control, zero. And also, if they were to reduce it, it would have a major impact on the, the lessening amount we, we owe. Increase it, increase it. It was, they were to increase it, that would reduce it. Yeah. The, but it just is a point that to be aware of, that it's not something that we control or anything like that. It's just a, something that we might want to, to do. The, any questions on that? Let's see, do we have to approve this?
No, they're both, both of them are information.
All right. Any, any other comments on? In good shape. Very good. Going on to item G, review and discuss Coastside Fire Protection District miscellaneous and safety pension plans. Chief Wilson, same thing.
Same, same thing. So President Burke just mentioned, it shows on page ten, increase and decrease. It is one percent makes a very large difference, positive and negative. And that report is appeared correct. Number of employees matches the previous. It looked, looked good, and we are currently in a good financial situation to continue to pay each year the lump sum amount so that we receive the discount instead of the month, the month paid.
Yeah, good point. A good point. All right. Moving on then to Board of Directors report, the Finance Committee. And our package is the spreadsheet for the year and also for the month of July. The month of July just says the one month in there really doesn't tell us anything on, on that. But I just point out that in the annual spreadsheet for the twelve month, and I'm sure that you have this too, it notes that our total income and revenue was sixteen point seven million dollars. And our total expenses, expenses were twelve point nine million. In the initial expenses that we're experiencing for Station forty four, we spent some seven, five hundred and forty eight million dollars out of our operating plan for the year. But other than that, I'm not aware of any questionable items or any, if there's any board member having I'll mention at this point, one other thing, chief, that I've asked yourself for maybe our accounts. I mentioned last, I believe it was last month, the fact that in our, again, on the spreadsheet, we have two million dollars in operating funds on the spreadsheet. And it is, it is very confusing because they, even though that two million dollars is real and it's accounting, but on the spreadsheet, it, it subtracts it from our operating income. And if I recall correctly, the reason that money is there, that interesting enough, when we were building Station forty one, the chief didn't have, there wasn't, there's a lag time between transferring money from life of the county issuing checks to the vendors. And then to remedy that, we said, well, we'll put operating funds at the county so there wouldn't be any lag, we'd be able to do it. Well, was well intended. It's never been used now in five years. Just as something that was there. And I would ask, and I don't know that this requires a vote or anything. If it does, we'll put it on another meeting, that, that that two million dollars be moved back to life. And so it just makes it clear what money we have at San Mateo. And if the chief wishes to, or when we're building forty four, if we need the money, obviously, or any kind of operation. And if it goes back to Lake, then it's labeled operational expenses, not capital expenses, it's operations. And you're, that's just an information item for your consideration and welcome any comments you might have. But again, I just think it's a little confusing to see that there. Sounds like it's just an oversight, not taking it out before now. Yeah. I don't know what the time lapse is to, if you were request from to take money, want to make the letter check for Station forty four. What the time lapse is to take it from one to bring it to the county to get a check written. Or if for some reason it would be needing for capital expense, a new engine or something, something happens. Is, is there a time lapse that makes it tough to, to do that? Anyway, if there is, let us know. But otherwise, I'd like to have that move. Okay? JV, anything else? Moving on, that's the end of financial report. Yes?
Just any question about the strike team reimbursements? Of course, we've been active, have we not, with supporting prematurely, sending strike teams, and the strike team reimbursement seems substantial. Where do they come from? And do you feel like they're being provided to us on a timely basis?
I think, well, that goes through the Cal OES, like MARS system. And it is a delayed process a lot of the time because you're dealing with a lot of moving parts after those fires and trying to close those out. And a lot of times they'll send, where I get an email to where I need to update or I need to change something in there. So we have to pay attention to that to make sure we get our checks family. But yeah, sometimes it's several months after the fire. Sometimes the fires don't close out, you know, our resources are back home. Those fires are still going out. They're still going through finance and closing them out. So it's sometimes several months, five, six, seven months or longer.
Yeah, the fiscal closeout of some incidents can take a long time, especially if it qualifies for federal, like FMAG funding. There's a lot of checks and balances that go into that.
You're satisfied at the end of the day, it all works out and what we should be reimbursed, we?
We are being reimbursed and the district is not leaning on that money to survive.
Good question. Thank you. You know, the related, I can tag on to that. I am, perhaps other board members, another member, often of all of, all of us going on, ask if, if we, the district Coastside has an engine going someplace to help. And I know oftentimes we do. And I would just suggest an interesting thing to do, if that happens, put a notice on our website. That you have an engine that went someplace. I don't know that a lot of local individuals understand that we're doing that. I think they should.
It's good to keep track of the people who are helping. It's good to keep track of ours personnel who are helping elsewhere.
Okay, you had nothing to do, no, I was going to say generally, these big fires, everybody gets deployed, San Francisco, Oakland, I mean, all, all departments end up sending people. So moving on, Volunteer Committee report, Director Cockrell, Director Hannah. I don't have report. Director Hannah, may?
I'll, I'll be brief. I just wanted to add that we're continuing to, to get volunteers through the engineer apparatus program. Get, get some more individuals that can operate and drive the engine, which is fantastic. Kind of makes me jealous. I would like to do the same soon, hopefully, but we'll see. So that's great. Other than that, you know, it's just chugging along. I'll, I'll give more in the next, next meeting. I've got some items to bring up, but other than that, it's great. Thank you and a report.
Thank you. Thank you, Patrick. Land and Strike Committee report, Director Kenyon, Director Cheryl.
I think I've been out of the loop a little bit. Sean might be able to help me with this one, the, what's going on with forty four, the temp project and the south law. Just said, you know, we get caught up to speed too as well.
Sure. I can do that if you'd like.
Sure. Yeah. Please. Thank you, Sean.
This is the temp station forty four.
Yeah.
Specifically.
Well, I just basically, if you want to speak on temp station forty four, any updates from PBK on the main station? And then I think you know with the south wall with forty one, the steps of that, I think they're up to date on that, but that's basically the main three things.
Sure, I'd be happy to. Great to see you for each step. So the permanent station, we submitted our first permits in middle for the building permit to the county almost two months ago now. So it's a little bit, they're a little bit late getting their round one comments back to us. One, and we have contacted them a couple of times recently to see whether that, that once they respond and we're going to, we'll get a lot of comments, but it's for the, this is for the permanent station. So there's a lot for them. But one of the things to say a little longer is it's a pretty complex project. So once you get comments back, then we will have PBK in there, a nine team respond. And then we'll go into, assuming, my assumption's always been we'll go through at least two, probably three comment rounds before they're ready to issue the building permit. The comments are more they're more, it's a building permit. So unlike the planning permit, which we already have, they're more just the details of the design, structural design, civil and, you know, plans themselves. So that's the status of that project. In the meantime, we've gotten PGM engaged and they're ready for the temp service. Once we're ready to construct, to demo the existing station and put the temporary power up that's needed during construction. So that's PGM is, is already told us they're ready for that, well, we are. The permanent service upgrade from two hundred amp now to eight hundred amp for the new station is still in design with PGM. So by the time we need that and we're ready for that conversion, they have to upgrade some poles and infrastructure offsite to make that happen then. So that's in PGM design, but I don't, that's on a critical path right now. The critical path has been up till recently and probably still is today, although it's going to ship to the permanent station pretty soon. But the critical path for the entire Station forty four project has been the temp station. Because we got firefighters in there in order to obviously be able to demo and construct the new station. So the status of that is that we are now in the third, fourth round of comments from the county. And we've been pushing to get that issue, conditional issuance of the building permit. In the meantime, we did the project and we'll be discussing that at next week's meeting, special meeting. We put the project out, we did, and got six bids. And we have a recommendation that we'll be sharing, we haven't already regarding the, the staff recommended action to proceed into construction of that project. Even if we said to any bidder that if you're bidding, please be, make sure you have crews available to do this in October. Maybe if we don't, want to be grading in the winter. So all the contractors understood that when they bid the projects and that should be something they're looking to. So if we, if the board moves forward with a, an awarded construction contract next week, then I'm confident we'll be able to build that in October. The modular building's been ready for three months now, just sitting in a, ready for us to be, ready to be delivered. So as soon as that site's created and the utility connections are stowed out, we can bring the modular building in, connect up. And, you know, then you can set up the comms and get firefighters new in. And once that's done, then that sets the stage for when you did that building permit on the permanent station, we can start and go to bid and start construction. One other quick update on Station forty four, the permanent station, we're going to pre-qualify bidders. We want to make sure that we get good qualified contractors. So rather than just put it out to the construction bid, right now, we're out to bid, we're closing the first week of September on pre-qualification bid. So we're, we've sent that out and I've already gotten indications from three contractors that paying tend to submit. So this will give us a pre-qualified list of bidders. You have to be on that list to be able to bid. The formal bid, which I'm going to put out once we're further along with the building permit. So I'll put out a formal bid. With the formal bid, that's when we'll bring it back to you for contractor award, obviously. So you'll have like the bid results and make a decision as to proceeding with construction of permanent station. So that's it on Station forty four. Any questions?
So pleased that we're pre-qualifying our contractor.
Now, maybe I missed it. When, when is the expected bid to go off of construction of forty four?
Once we get into the, once the building permit is ready to issue, then we'll put the construction out to bid.
What, are we talking about nine, two thousand and thirty? When?
Oh. It was like, it's dependent on the county building permit process, which as I said, I think it's been three or four rounds. I think, I think realistically, I'm assuming late this year, early next year.
Okay. Right here.
But by that time, we'll have the modular in place for the temp station.
Yes.
And be ready. The last thing we want to do is put that out to bid or operating over the contractor and the temp station's still not in place yet.
Anything else? No, thank you. Keep up the good work.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Vegetation Management Committee report, Director Cockrell, Director Hannah. Vegetation, nothing, okay. Special District Association. Director Hannah?
Well, as you can see, I'm at the annual event right now, and I know that President Burke was here Monday and Tuesday. Well, as you can see, I'm at the uh annual event right now, and I know that President Burke uh was here Monday and Tuesday, um and. I will uh put together a full report for the, either the next main meeting or or not. I mentioned that there was some really interesting fire-related conversations that were had, um one that went on for almost three hours, and the room was pretty packed. Um so I'll have some good stuff to bring back, but it's good, it's, you know, people are just still have on their mind what's happened in California this year, of course. Um really what happens in California every year, so it's uh some good stuff, so I I appreciate it, and I'll I'll put it together and bring it to the next meeting. Thank you, and report.
Thank you, Patrick. Uh just for the record, I did the ten, it's the California Special District meeting as well, I had to leave a little bit early, but uh. As usual, there were some very good information that was distributed, and then a lot out of it, so thank you, Patrick. Moving on to A L S G P report, there's no meetings, nothing to report. Emergency preparedness lays on report, department emergency services.
This is a two-point report from the Gaspay for that.
Yes.
Is, first of all, Nelson Fortaway, C O R T E W A Y. Has been hired as the new coast side coordinator for the Department of Emergency Management. He is the retired Hillsborough Police Chief. So he's just come aboard, we'll be seeing him, I'm sure, in the future. David also hosted a four-hour conference at the Oceana. Uh for coast side tsunami responding agencies, and very interesting. Meeting with schools, hotels, the tourism uh agencies, the state parks people, several cert programs, C B Os. Um there was a presentation, there were three rounds of breakout groups and discussions. And people had a chance to inform each other of how they saw the last two, well, the two tsunami warnings. How that played out, the difference between the first one and the second one, uh and what they'd like to see done differently in the future. So it was a valuable inter-agency meeting, not something that you should have, that's usually where, kind of silent off, so. Uh I think that we all learned a lot with them.
Very good.
End of report.
Thank you, Sophia. Um, sir, reporter, Director Cheryl.
Yes, sir, we are right at the end of Spanish Cert. It has been a true adventure of community building. It's it's a great group of thirty students who have gotten through three of the five classes, the fourth one is tonight, the last one is Saturday. I, Alice, uh Moonridge, and Coastside Cert have built this thing, and it's been a huge success. We are very pleased that there are thirty members of our community. Who are primarily Spanish speakers, some are bilingual, but most are full-on Spanish speakers, and. Moonridge will be uh the community on the coast side with proportionally the most certs. When we're all said and done on Saturday afternoon, so we're glad for that. But we've also found that this has built relationships with Pillow Ridge, with the new Stone Pine Cove community. Um and with uh other areas of town where Spanish speakers have come to us, Hill Re seeders Park. Who have come to us and said, and we do it too. So we're pleased that there's that kind of enthusiasm in the community now, and the ability to cross over, we've never been able to do that.
Very good.
End of report.
Thank you, Sophia. Attorney's report, Jane?
Nothing, thank you very much.
On file, Marshall's report, Patrick?
Good afternoon, for the month of August. Sorry, July, uh forty eight plans were reviewed, sixty four inspections. Uh and sixty eight business inspections as well, uh one thing to note. Fire Marshal's office will have a booth at the pumpkin festival this year for information. To distribute, along with having the Cal Fire hiring, state hiring there as well. For information as well, and a report.
Thank you, very good. Uh, fire chief's report, Chief Wilson?
Alright, uh last month, uh two hundred and thirty eight calls. Uh a response time to those calls of five forty seven, so well under. Uh one engine did uh go out of county to the Picket Fire in Hellenhue. Immediate need, and they returned just, yeah, they're on their way back, they should be back in the county soon, so. Um.
Which engine were?
Uh one forty.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah. Uh we, there was a beach safety meeting um that Supervisor Bueller's office put on. Um I attended along with Chief uh Martin. And State Parks was there, Parks Department was there, and Sheriff was there. And it's working on a collaboration on how we can reduce beach safety incidents along the coast. I felt it was very informative, there's three subgroups that have been formed off of that. I will be sitting on two, uh Gary doesn't know yet, but Gary will probably be sitting on one, or or Chief Martin will. Um and walking through some things we can do, because the county's gonna be opening the park down the coast. Um and they will have somebody there twenty-four seven, but that is gonna generate potentially more incidents. Um so it was very positive, um and looking forward to those subgroups. I mean, the positive change will be for the coast. South lot uh opening, are we announcing that, or?
Uh, sure, well, I think if you just, if the date works, I didn't have a question.
Uh the South Lot uh event on the tent, does that, does that go?
We, it's, we've had a discussion going on uh with the, the need for that. Um and I have some opinions I've expressed to Sean on that, I guess to. To bring it to a head, if you will, I would ask chief that, uh it it does not. I'm gonna be out of town, so it's probably not gonna be the meeting, but J D said that he would be in town. And if yourself and Sean decide that's the date to do it, go forward with it. I I would just add, if I can't get it off my chest, that I. The similar things that we've had in the past to announce those kind of things. And they're so low attendance, it's predictable who's going to move later. I had mentioned the possibility that Sean to, if you will, uh perhaps put it on the. Web and do something else, or put a sign up there that, so the people who actually walk by it can see it. The people, very few of the people who use it and walk by it will be able to attend in time in person. But my position is, I must have heard, as any other position, I'd be with yourself and Sean to nail it, nail it down, whatever. Okay, is that all right?
Okay. Anything else, end of report?
End of report, anything else that anybody else would like to comment on? I would just add, I saw, I don't know if you saw, then I had to go by uh the new. Um the Station Forty One, the land physical, the landscape was great, the sign is at which I, for the first time, people know that that. You know, if you look at the Station Forty One, I I will bet you nine out of ten people do not know that's a fire station, unless they see it. It looks like it's a, you know, some kind of a truck station.
It's in there, so.
And and a signage on it over the door, I mean, you know, unless you're the. Twenty twenty, you cannot see what it is, so, but it looks great, the signage out front is fine, and the landscaping, oh, landscaping, Mr. Rose, that's. That's a calm, anything else?
Just wanna say thank you for the, putting that part together, and the director Stockman, who initiated all of this, and. Well, uh, Mr. Rose, who has led up the whole effort, and to this board, who was cooperating in the financing of all this. And everyone themselves, it's an asset to the community, and I think they're thrilled. That's what I hear back from people, it's overwhelming and positive.
You know, if anybody has a picture of what the landscape looked like from Forty One before Forty One was built. And go by there today with the station and with the new landscape, wow, what a change. Anything else, without objection, your turn, thank you.